How's it going guys? Welcome back to the Not Everything's Black and White Podcast. We got a special episode today. We got Paul Barban and he is running for East Penn School District, which is near and dear to my heart. I work in the community where he's at and I get to hear the complaints and some of the things that people want to be changed. So with the current climate right now, local politics and politics in general, there's a lot of eyes on it. So what we look to do is give candidates an opportunity to talk and talk directly to the community and explain you where some of their initiatives are and some of their background. So with no further ado, I wanted to give Paul an opportunity to introduce himself.
Hi. Yeah, my name is Paul Barban. I've been in the district. My wife and I have lived here since late 2008, but I'm a lifelong resident of the Lehigh Valley, grew up in Bethlehem. My wife and I both grew up in Bethlehem. I'm a Penn State grad, Freedom High grad, and we've got two girls in the district. One is a sophomore at the high school. The other one is a fourth grader in the district. And you know, I'm really running because you know, at the end of the day, I think with with sort of the way that political discourse has gotten in this country, as we've seen of late, the best way to kind of bridge those gaps is to roll up your sleeves, dig in, work with people, and check all the political nonsense at the door.
Yeah, I hear you. And we got some, we got, we got to kind of roll in and have a pre-interview with Paul. And one of the things I like about him the most is that there's, there's a common sense approach to it. That's the theme, and I think it'll be the theme moving forward with, with school boards and everything in general, especially with local politics. People are always surprised once things finally trickle down, but some of the policies at the national level have started to trickle down to some of these school districts. There's, people aren't aware, but what's the budget at the East Penn School District currently?
Yeah, so the upcoming budget this year is going to be, I think, $205, $206 million is where it finally settled down.
Which is a huge amount.
Which is, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a good amount. And you know, budgeting at the end of the day is all about priorities. And I think, you know, that's where some of these discussions need to revolve around. But I think to your point, right, this notion of, of what's local and what's politics and what's national and all that. The reality is that a job at the school board level, right, it's not a legislative job. So we're not dealing with a lot of these national issues, right? I know that they kind of get amplified when they show up in certain school districts, but 99% or if not more, what we're going to deal with are going to be personnel issues, infrastructure issues, right? Curriculum-related types of things, cultural issues, accountability things. They're not going to be these national issues for the most part. And so I think getting lost in those issues, while I understand the environment we're in, it's easy to kind of focus on those issues, you know, but the reality is, I think what we really need, especially for local offices, including school boards, are just good, good old fashioned common sense problems.
We love that. That's our slogan.
Yeah. And I like that you highlight that because I think that's where things get convoluted. When we talk to voters, I spend a lot of time with the party locally, trying to get people to get involved. We see at the national level, the thing that we want to kind of trickle down is the participation. And I think that's what's the most important part of school board to me is like, that's the, with anybody with children, I think that's like, one of the most important things that I could think about.
Correct.
Who's going to be a steward of the funding and also who's going to be in control of the administrative decisions?
Right. And I also love that you do have kids in the district, which, you know, makes it more that you have skin in the game. You're going to care more than, you know, say someone else that might be running for school board. So that, I think that says a lot, too.
Yeah. Well, and I mean, listen, I think when, when I look at kind of how I try to just keep my little corner of the world, make it a better place, right? You know, you can look to, you know, some of the nonprofit work that I do. But you know, jumping in and sort of getting involved here at the school board level is not only, I think, a meaningful thing in terms of we are, we're vested, right? We've got, we've got kids in the district, so we're invested in this area. But also, I think with some of the current things that we're dealing with, it really plays to the sweet spot for my skills and experience.
Yeah. And touch a little bit on that. What do you, like, what do you do for a living and what do you think makes you more qualified than other candidates?
So what I do for a living is wealth management and financial planning. I own my own business with my partner for just about 15 years. I've been in the business now about 25. Sold the business a couple of years ago, but I'm still, still engaged with my clients and working. And so, you know, the bulk of what I've done professionally has been to help families identify kind of what it is they're trying to accomplish and then set them on a path, right? And so it's, it's one part kind of long-term planning and it's one part, how do we adjust as we go? And, and so I think that, you know, when we're talking about things like creating a sustainable budget or looking at the realignment plan issue we've been dealing with here in East Penn, you know, that's a skillset that I think is, you know, fairly unique to the problem. And, you know, I think is something that I can bring a lot of value to pretty quickly to the table.
I agree, especially with recently, I know Amesboro has had a 26% increase in taxes. So, you know, you're getting that increase in taxes, you want someone that's going to be in these positions that know how to allocate money, know where to put the money, know where to make cuts if needed, because obviously a 26% increase in taxes is kind of ridiculous, to be honest with you, in my opinion.
Yeah. So you've got, right, Amesboro residents are facing that tax increase. You know, here in Lower McCongee, we've been pretty fortunate on the, on the township tax side of things. But you know, there's a chance that we're going to see county taxes go up. We're obviously still dealing with the remnants of, you know, four to five years of inflation and the cumulative effect of that on people. And I think people are feeling fairly stretched right now. And, you know, at the district level, we had a 4% tax increase this past year for the school district. And, you know, with, with the realignment plan that had, that has been presented is now on pause, but had been presented, you know, we would have seen tax increases at the, what's called the Act One limit, right? Right up to the maximum projected limit for the foreseeable future. And when I say foreseeable future, that's the district's own words. Those are not my words. Those are the words that the district's advisors used. So, you know, we were going to be looking and putting our taxpayers in a position where they're, they were going to be right up against that maximum limit, if not at the maximum limit for, for the next bit of time. And, you know, and we can talk about the realignment plan in more detail. But it was a plan that became clear to me that the more people learned, the less they liked. And so I think as that became clear, and, you know, so I really sort of set out to, let's provide as much explanation about what this plan is.
Yeah, talk more about it.
Yes. So roughly three years ago, the district set out to deal with some, what they call capacity issues and equity issues. Now, the equity issues are not what I would, this is, I think they, they use this word not in the hot button way that it's meant in a lot of cases. They meant it more as, we have two middle schools that are very different, right? They are different demographically. They have had over the years, different grading systems, even different curriculums. And so I think it was a way of kind of aligning those, those two schools.
Was there, not to interrupt you, was there a cause for that? I think that's interesting.
So I, as I understand it, right, I went on a pilot program, I'm going to guess now, 13-ish years ago, like somewhere 10, 15 years ago, they won a pilot program. They went to sort of this more open space, pod oriented type. And so, and the grading system was, was a little more forgiving, right? It was, it was a little more geared around trying to master the material. And so kids might get multiple shots at getting their grades up and other things. Lower McCongee was left on sort of the more traditional system. And they just never, they just never aligned them.
Fair enough.
And so they, I think this was an opportunity for them to do that. So they, they sort of looked at, and they, and based on the demographic or the enrollment projections rather that they did, you know, they were, they were saying we were going to have capacity issues at two to three of the elementary schools.
Wow.
So they created three options. They chose the realignment plan among those three options. One, one option was to like completely redo the high school, which does need a lot of work. And the other one was sort of a traditional redistricting model. So they went with the realignment plan model. It was originally priced at $66 million. The traditional redistricting, I believe, was originally 60 million and to do the high school was somewhere between 180 and 250, depending on what they were going to do. So I think they, you know, they put together some community focus groups, they did some surveys and they sort of, they came together on this realignment plan.
I got a question.
Yep.
When, when a school district does a project at scale like that, do they typically pay cash or do they finance it?
So originally, the original plan at the $66 million level was that they would pay cash. They'd be able to pay as they went.
Okay, that makes sense.
They had money, they had space in the budget to be able to do that and they'd be able to go forward. And the idea was that you would deal with the realignment plan, which sort of gave you the capacity at the elementary schools, align the middle schools, and then you could turn your attention to the high school. That was kind of the plan.
Doesn't sound like a terrible one. Am I right by thinking that?
So on paper, no, right? So financially, that doesn't sound terrible. There were, there was a lot of pushback. There was a fair bit of pushback at first to the, to the plan because it takes the traditional K to five model, right? We got K to five in elementary schools, both middle schools are six to eight and then nine to 12 at the high school. And it switched to a K to four model in the elementary school. One of the middle schools would be a five, six building, the other would be a seven, eight building, and then you have the high school.
So it was a full logistic restructuring?
Full logistic restructuring.
Wow, okay.
And so there, there were a number of teachers and parents in particular that had a lot of questions about the plan. And teachers, a lot of teachers didn't like the plan to begin with.
Right.
It uprooted them from their comfortability from where they were at.
Yeah. So I think there's a few different reasons. And, and, you know, so just to highlight maybe a couple of them. One was, you know, if right now you have two middle schools that have two, you know, you have two athletic departments, right? You have two theater groups. So each middle school would put on a play or a musical. Well, if all of a sudden, and so you've got seven, eight, seventh, eighth graders at one, seventh, eighth graders at another, you have two musicals, right? So all those kids have opportunities. Once you have one seven, eight building, right now, how are you handling this? Because in theory, there are going to be kids who lose an opportunity unless you have, you keep doing two musicals or, right? Or what are you doing? So there was some pushback on, on those fronts. There were some pushback around, you know, how many transitions do kids that are in the special education program have to make? Because we know fewer transitions tends to be better. So there were, they had some questions, right? Parents had questions about transportation. When are school going to end? Are they all going to end at different times? Are they all going to end at the same time? Right? It was going to cost more for busing. So there were, there were.
Yeah. What's, what was like the overall impact on homeowners, taxpayers?
So we didn't, they didn't really get into that because what they did was they sort of put in a cost estimate of 66 million and said, we can pretty much handle this inside the budget. Okay. So that was roughly three years ago, right? So the board voted eight to one to move the process forward. So they did and they moved it along. And we had gotten to, I believe, the design and schematic phase. And so the board was, we needed to now move that ball forward to approve the actual design.
Now, let me ask you, I hate to punch in because for clarity though, so the board actually gets to sit down with the developer or the contractor?
Yes. So, and I'm, I'm assuming anyway, that at least behind the scenes, they've been kept informed every, kind of every step of the way.
Okay, gotcha.
I think with how things played out publicly, I'm not convinced that's entirely the case.
Yeah.
But the, the rub now comes in that, so as part of that process, they actually now put cost, real cost numbers to it. So what was 66 million turned into 95 million.
So 31 million.
So $31 million more. And
Theory versus practicality.
In, in the, in the presentation, the district's own advisors said during one of the school board meetings, when they presented this data, they said that we basically ran a bunch of different scenarios and we, there's really only one that works in terms of how we make this, how we make the money work in the budget. And so that 95 million breaks down into this, right? You have to now increase taxes to this Act One maximum, which is a state, sort of a state level that says you can't raise taxes more than this without putting it on the ballot as a referendum. So, and there's a projected what that looks like, right? So it's somewhere between, sort of call it three to 4% for the next five to seven years. So, you know, you'd be at that maximum. In order to make it work, again, money-wise, they had to reduce the planned staffing of the, of that new plan. So they had a whole projection around, plan around, here's the staffing that's going to be required. They had to back off from that.
So now they had to cut staff?
We have, the, the board had built in pretty consistently an eight million dollar number for capital.
So you cut staff?
It was planned staff.
Planned staff, okay.
Right? So just to make the math easy, to do this plan, we need 10 more teachers and five more aides. Well, we're now going to only hire seven and three.
Okay, not current, not current, okay, not current faculty, okay.
This is cutting a planned, planned additional staff. We had, there was an eight million dollar line item in the budget every year for capital expenditures. And that's to smooth it, right? So you don't, because capital, you know, infrastructure, you know, the roofs and other things, they, they don't happen every year. So that you build an eight million dollar number in per year, that gets allocated to a capital fund, and then your capital expenditures kind of get paid out of that, but it smoothes it out.
It's laying out a little bit. So that, would that be considered like preventative maintenance?
Yes, right. So there's a, there's a current maintenance plan that the district follows for all of its buildings.
Okay.
Some years, it's going to be relatively easy, but if an HVAC system is getting old and needs to be replaced, that's obviously a big number. So to prevent the budget from looking like this, right? They do this at a certain number. Put the money over here into a, into a capital fund and then they, they fund those projects out of that number. Sort of like, you know, if you know you need a new roof every 20 years, you, you set $2,000 aside a year as opposed to waiting and
Well, I don't know if our viewers do it, but a financial planner, that's great advice. We're getting like the duality here. We're getting a little bit of everything.
Yeah. So they had to, they had to reduce that number from eight to six and a half million. So we
reduced the amount we were going to make available to other parts of the district on an annual basis. And so we, the taxes, this, that. Oh, and, and in order to make all that work, we, they borrowed, they'd have to borrow 120 million, not the 95, because what they did was they said, because from a cash flow standpoint, right? It's, it kind of gets really weird these first couple of years. So they take that six and a half million now that's that capital money and they borrow basically four years of it upfront.
Got you.
So you gotta do, you do all of that and then we can make the math work in the budget going forward. But it does a few things, right? One is it adds a tremendous strain to the taxpayer right out of it.
Tremendous, yeah.
It's not a plan that when taxpayers start to hear about it, that they get behind, right? There would be a lot more support if they were doing this for the high school. There would be some more support, right?
It's the nature of it. Yeah, it's understandable. It's the nature of it.
I think there's just a general consensus in the community that the high school's old, needs work, right? Parkland, as an example, has built a brand new high school and is now renovating a brand new high school in the time since we've last done a major renovation at ours. So there'd be a little more, at least a little more community support if it was at the high school.
And I think that's just the perception of the average person. In the high school where the games are played and that's like the, that's the centerpiece of any school district.
You can walk through the high school, right? And it is wall-to-wall kids. Now they're, you know, the district would say that we are not technically at capacity and that is probably an accurate statement. But I mean, the gym's old, the auditorium's old, like it just, it needs some TLC.
What would you change with the realignment plan? What are, what are things you might change?
So here's what, here's what I would change. At least as a starting point where I, where I've kind of landed is, so that, remember that initial redistricting option, which was 60 million? So the reality is that when, when you think of traditional redistricting, right? You think we're just going to redraw the lines where kids go to school and kind of redistribute them at the elementary level in particular.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's part of that, but that 60 million is actually, only one third of that cost was elementary school related. The other two thirds was again, the same kind of modernizations to the middle school, not capacity related. I'm not convinced we need to do, I'm not convinced the taxpayer right now needs to pick up a big tab to renovate the middle schools.
Hear you.
So what, where I would start is I'd say, let's do the traditional redistricting. Nobody's going to like it. Nobody ever does. But if we still have the enrollment issue at the elementary level, right? You can do that for what would have been 20 million three years ago. So let's say that's now 30 million. So it's 30 million, let's call it. You do the traditional redistricting, you've now added the additional capacity at the elementary schools. I'd put the middle school stuff on the back burner and I'd say, hey, let's, let's put a 15-year plan, 20-year plan in place for the high school, because there's no way we can bite off the entire renovation right now.
Okay, that's, that's what I, that's the conclusion I came to mentally.
Right. And so we'll come, we'll come back to that because I think there, this is sort of what, that's a good example of the kinds of things that frustrate people. But what I would do is say, let's create five phases. Let's say, let's roughly $50 million per phase. Let's create a plan that sort of looks like that. And if we can make that practically work, and then I'd say, phase one is that 30 million plus 50, we're at 80. Let's see what that looks like in the budget. What does that do to the taxpayer? And can we build community support for this long-term plan? That would be my starting point today.
And I think the best part about it is the downside of it, if I remember correctly from the beginning, was really just the displacement part, right? There's, there's some logistics to figure out. But it was, when I asked you what could go wrong with that, it was equivalent to the plays and some of the activity programs, which I think can be amended and figured out amongst the faculty or even you guys. I think that's a minimal
Correct. And at the middle schools, honestly, nothing much would change. You can align the two middle schools in terms of grading systems, curriculum, et cetera. But you can, you can more align them. And frankly, if you need to redistrict even the middle schools, you can do that. I mean, if you were to look at the district now, I mean, it would look like, it's, it's not quite as bad as some of the congressional districts that are out there. But I mean, it doesn't necessarily make logical sense either in terms of, I think what happened is as the district grew and as a new neighborhood or new apartment complex went in, they just kind of sent those kids to where there was capacity. And now, if you were to step back and say, how would we redraw this geographically? Like, I'm not sure, it wouldn't look the way it does today.
Yeah. You said something interesting from personal experience, ironically, as a kid, I didn't know. But when I went, when I went to the high school I went to, right when I was coming up on ninth grade, they moved ninth grade back into middle school. And you know what? It was a great experience. It allowed me to like, kind of give, sports-wise, I remember like, the way it worked out was great, but I'm a person, I was personally, a person that was personally affected by, at the time, I didn't know it was budget, some sort of budget rearrangement. But that's interesting though.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't, so personally, I don't have any particular issue with the K to four model that they, that they proposed, right? Parents had some logistical, mostly logistical types of questions. Teachers seemed to be more, more opposed to it. And, and that's a whole, teachers and kind of how they're, where they're feeling.
Yeah, for obvious reasons.
Well, and for, for reasons that weren't necessarily obvious to me because I'm not a teacher. But, you know, this is now, this is my second time running. I've taken three years to really talk to people. And, you know, you get to, you gain some trust with people and they start to give you some of those things that aren't, aren't so obvious.
Yeah.
Give us some insight like what the school board actually controls and what they do. Because I feel like a lot of people honestly have no idea. And what are, what are three things that you would really, really focus on if you get in there?
Okay. So this, unlike a lot of elected positions, the school board is not, it's not a legislative position. You're not, you know, you're not proposing, you know, brand new policies and legislation, et cetera, right? Your job, it's an oversight job. So just like, you know, I work with the Boys and Girls Club of Allentown, I work with Wildlands Conservancy, you know, as on being on the board of directors.
Which is super important.
The, the executive and the executive team run the district. They do day-to-day management of the district. The, the board's job is to, so when, I had a business mentor in mind early on, tell me that if you're going to own your own business, one of the things you always want to do is you want to make sure you're, you're not just working in the business, but you're working on the business.
Absolutely.
And so you have to take, you have to like carve time out. He said, the biggest thing that people who grow a business and they, they hit a point and they can't grow it anymore, is because they're too busy, too focused on in the business and they don't do enough on the business.
Yeah, wow.
One of the big roles, I think of a board, is to make sure that you're working on the organization. Let them do the, in the organization. And your job is to hold them accountable for results in there. But your job is to make sure that they're focused long-term strategically and staying focused on the, on the organization. You're also the last line of defense if people aren't happy with something, right? So if, if there's a situation in a school, parent, you know, disciplinary issue and a parent's not happy, right? You kind of, you work through the teacher, the principal, eventually the superintendent, and then if you're still not happy, eventually it comes to the, if there's a legal issue, yes. But, but you know, eventually it can, it can come to the board in terms of maybe a final say on things. So, you know, it's, it's a different, it's a different type of role.
Does the board vote on who the superintendent is?
Yes. In fact, it's the, it's the only position that the, that the board hires and fires directly.
And that's a huge deal.
Correct.
So, so you hire the superintendent or vote, and then the superintendent hires?
His or her team.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely. And there, and there may be certain personnel decisions that the board weighs in on.
Right. You guys weigh in on curriculum and stuff like that?
I think so. I think the board weighs in on curriculum. You know, again, it's a matter of
Because it really is, there's a lot of nuance. So there's things that you'll be directly affected by on a day-to-day basis. Sounds like the budget planning. But also you, like you said, you're the last line of defense. So things kind of seep through the cracks of
I mean, I look at it, I look at it, if you had to sum up what I think the board is ultimately responsible for at a high level, right? It's, it's long-term strategic planning, it's culture and it's accountability.
Yeah.
I think those are, those are the things that you do. And I think that ultimately, you can deal with most issues through those three things anyway.
Yeah, absolutely.
So now in terms of the, what would I focus on, like the three things? I think clearly, you know, right now, this realignment plan has been put on pause. So there was enough pushback. There were, there were multiple board members that raised some issues when the price tag shot up. There's a lot of community feedback. There were, there were community groups that sort of raised red flags along with, you know, people like me. So I think, you know, this is now, they're going to continue to do some additional work on the demo, on the, on the enrollment side to kind of relook at those numbers. And so this issue is going to come back up probably first quarter of next year.
Wow.
There's going to be some more information throughout Q4.
What a better time.
But I think early into next year, this is going to come back up. So this is, this, that issue is going to kind of be front and center.
A very pivotal time.
And I think that fits in with, with what I'd want to focus on anyway, which is creating a long-term sustainable budget, right? I mean, you want, taxpayers want predictability. I think, you know, teachers, parents want predictability. And frankly, the administration wants predictability.
And transparency. Nobody wants to be blindsided with
State maximum tax.
Right. Nobody wants to be blindsided. That's another thing. How's the, how's the district candidate? Have they been transparent?
On taxes?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, they, so they, part of the issue is that when you, if you go to a school board meeting, it's rare to get more than about five or six members of the public.
That's what I was going to ask you. So
Can I just say one thing about that? Which is outrageous. I mean, everyone complains about taxes and, and things in school and all these type of things, but nobody participates.
On Facebook, Instagram, every day.
Nobody participates. So we're giving you access here to somebody that's running for this position and he's telling you things that are going on, the way this money's allocated, things he's going to do. Everyone needs to stop making excuses if you're upset about your tax increase, your school, things like that, and get involved and vote. Vote. Register and vote. Your local elections, we hammer this all the time on this podcast. Your local elections are a million times more important than your day-to-day and national election. It is what it is. I know everyone gets hyped and all excited for national elections and all that type of stuff. But your local elections affect your day-to-day, especially if you have children. I mean, it's, so just get involved. The only excuse is you can't keep complaining about the same things over and over. And then you're sitting there and you're not involved at all in any election until national. So get involved.
Especially on the precipice of the fact that there's going to be such big decisions made
Correct.
within that community. And we have a good following from that particular area very soon. And it's like, I mean, maybe, maybe it sounds biased, but having somebody on, on, involved with your background financially is just like, what a blessing that would be.
Well, yeah. And because A, we don't really have that background on the board right now.
Yeah. And that's what I've been told.
And Bob Saul, who's the, the district's finance guy I've talked to, right? He's a good guy. He does a really good job. But he's also, you know, kind of working in the direction that he's getting between the board and the administration. So, you know, he's, you know, he's, he's, he's kind of working, you know, within that, within that framework. I think it's really helpful to have somebody who just knows their way around financial statements, knows a way around a balance sheet and a cash flow statement. Because we, you know, it's, I roll out of bed, I know what questions to ask, right? I spent about 30 minutes on the phone with Bob, just going through, making sure I understood the nomenclature in the budget and some other things. And it's like, great, I got my head wrapped around this. Like I can, you know.
It sounds like you could do it in your sleep, if I'm being honest.
Yeah, because I do.
This has been educational for me.
I've not only done this for 25 years for, for individuals and families.
You did it at a high level.
I did it for my business. I've done it for, you know, these other organizations that I work with.
Do you know, I mean, you don't have to talk about it. I want to be, what other people do for a living in general?
Well, so I think, I know there are a couple of people that are in education in some, in some fashion, right? And have a background either in sort of local high school education or at the collegiate level.
Okay.
Which is great.
Which is great.
Which is great.
Which is fine, right? But it's like anything, it's like anything else, you know, we, we, there's, we have, we have such a focus on, on diversity right now in our culture and in our discourse. Diversity of background and diversity of thought, diversity of experience is really important.
Yep. And so So is merit.
So is merit.
So is merit.
Fair enough, right? But, you know, if we're talking about a board seat, all you need to do is get enough votes, merit not going to come into play.
Yeah, true.
Right? So, but it is, I think if you're a voter, you know, it's not about, well, we got to have a finance guy. It's, no, you want, you want to have somebody who has the right experience to ask the right questions and be able to say, you know what? Let's not, here's a, here's a great example, right? There were multiple board members during this whole process who, when the costs kind of skyrocketed up, said, you know, I'm concerned that we're not going to have the ability to do what we need to do at the high school if we push this realignment plan forward. And you could tell that there was tension among some of the board members as this thing sort of played out. And the district's advisors came back the following week or the following two weeks, right? The, the next meeting and basically provided a projection to say, hey, we know that there were questions about the high school. So let's, we wanted to take a look at it. Okay. So let's take a look at it. So what they did was they showed what would happen if we were to do a full $250 million renovation right now. And I'm sitting there doing the, before they even put a number up, it's like, we know that if you spend 95, borrow 120, tax increases to the max, you cut spending on the capital side, you cut your planned staff, and all of that leaves you no room in the budget going forward at all. That's barely, you can barely make that work. $250 million is off the table right out of the gate. There's no way it's going to work. It doesn't take a financial genius to figure that part out. In fact, In fact, as they, as they were presenting it with all the red, it was like, this is, if I was one of the board members that said, I wanted to take a look at this, this is really condescending.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really patronizing. And of course you had a couple of the board members that are pushing this real hard, say, well, that's going to be too expensive. We can't do that. And it was kind of like, well, no kidding. I mean, this is not helpful.
Well, but that's the difference. That's, that's why with times where background matters, you know, it's great to have somebody who has experience in education, but there's a difference between being a player and a coach and being the GM.
Absolutely.
It's not the same process.
And, and there's, you know, and this is where when people say that they're concerned that the district isn't being transparent, this is now one of the things that you can point to, right? Now, I'm not going to put that on the district. I'm not going to say, I know the superintendent, I don't, I'm not, you know, I, I'm not going to put on her or anybody else that you intentionally tried to do a red dress, blue dress thing with us here that says, well, this is clearly not, this is clearly not visible, so this is what we're gonna do.
That's a great reference.
But it's kind of like, it feels that way and it becomes very easy for people to draw the conclusion that that's what you're trying to do.
Yeah, it seems flighty when, when, when you don't know what you're doing.
Yeah, so it's either you presented it for that reason, or you just got really lazy with this. But either way, it's, this isn't helpful. Because the, it's not a binary choice between we spend 95 or we spend 250 right now. It's like, there's a whole range of options in between. And, you know, if, but if you don't have a background to be able to understand that it's not a binary choice, you might look at it and say, well, they're, they're right, can't do that, so let's do this.
They're the experts, trust them.
Yeah, wow, that's literally.
Yeah, and so, you know, I think, I think half the battle, I think half the battle is just knowing how to ask questions.
He said a lot of the, I'm sorry, he said a lot of the people that are on the board are, you know, they have school.
Good intentions, yeah.
I mean, on the, you know, on the board you've got.
It's a different game, yeah.
I think there's an engineer, right? You've got, you've got an attorney, you've got.
Someone comes to them with a budget and a number, they just look at the number, they're like, yeah, it sounds, you know what I mean?
Right.
Not to say that they all do that, but I'd rather have somebody like Paul.
Yeah, when you don't have the skill set to come up with alternative options. And those are the kind of things that's scary, man. We, we talk about it so casually, but they make big. I work in Amaya, so I, I'm, I frequently throughout the whole day, I see the people, I hear the complaints, I hear the gripes. And especially the, the, the parents, which now that I know that everybody's participating, show up, kind of makes me a little disappointed, but it just.
Well, and I don't know.
People are concerned about the unknown.
Yeah, the meetings are, are, are live streamed on YouTube.
Which I love that they do that.
And you can go back and watch them. So I, I don't want to, I don't want to say that there's only seven people attending.
Not at all.
Right? That's just physical attendance.
Yeah. Which I love that they do that. And I know, we talked to Neil and Neil said that the Borough Council does that as well, which I think that is good.
Well, and again, so.
That's not common.
And it's one of those things where, where when people say the district's not transparent, right? The board and the administration and others will point to, I mean, we post all this stuff online. It's like, yeah, you do, but then, then you do this, right? And it's like, you present this as the alternative and it's like, that's just not helpful.
Yeah.
And this is why people, you know, so getting back to, to your question earlier about the, like, what would you, like, what are you going to focus on? The, the other thing slash two things are going to be the relationship, I think, that the district has with the community, which.
Is important.
It's important and I'm not convinced is in great shape, right? I'm not suggesting it's in tatters.
From outside looking in, it seems like.
I get enough feedback that causes me some concern. And the relationship between a lot of teachers and our administration is also not real good right now. And so.
Why is that?
So on the whole, I would say, and I, I want to, I don't want to speak for all teachers, right? I'm, I'm going to speak for.
Just the overall nature of it.
Yeah, and the teachers that I have, that I have talked to, which I've got a pretty good sample size at this stage. They don't feel valued, they don't feel respected, they don't feel heard. They believe that the administration and the board give them what I'll call a perfunctory forum to provide feedback, but they just ram through what they want to do anyway, regardless of the feedback that they give. We, and we've seen that with some of the redistricting plan. We saw that with the detracking issue that happened a few years ago. And so on the whole, teachers are just not feeling valued and respected. Not every single one. But again, I think that is a sentiment that is pervasive enough that I would, I would want to be intentional about trying to deal with that cultural issue.
Yeah, no, that's, man, that's, that's an in-depth, Paul, you, you've educated me. This is our third or fourth. But you've touched on some things that we haven't got a chance to touch on, especially with the financial side. There's some things personally that you've kind of added to my repertoire because of that. Yeah, so I think that's super interesting and I mean, I'm glad that you think of it from, from a, from a full perspective because the fact that you've kind of identified the relationship between, and I think it's, Amaya's a great community, so for there to be a disconnect, it's just a matter, I think, of planning and unknown and having potentially people that don't necessarily have their footing down.
Right.
And that can lead to uncertainty.
Well, you know, when, when you hear.
Which trickles down to the kids at the end of the day.
You know, when you hear things like, the way that, the way the district kind of approaches and deals with teachers right now, is sucking the joy out of the job, like it becomes concerning.
Yeah.
And, you know, I would love it to be sitting here and saying, I'm just running because I think I can be valuable and I've got some good experience and I don't see, I don't see any issues. Like, I would love that. I don't want there to be issues.
Yeah, of course.
But, you know, there, there are some, and I think we just, you know, it takes, again, it takes, it takes leadership and it takes intentionality to deal with these things.
Yeah.
And I think it takes the experience to know, where do I as a board member plug in? How do I help to push things in the right direction? You know, and how, how do you do that in a constructive way? Not in a, hey, look at me, I'm going to, you know, become fiery and, you know, you know, make this about me and what I'm trying to get done and put the attention on me. It's got to be about what's happening, right? I think the, one of the things I've, I've always tried to live by is, I think it was Harry Truman who said, it's amazing what you can accomplish when you don't care who gets the credit.
Absolutely.
And I love that. Because I would, I would love nothing more than to be able to, to have a small part in fixing all this, you know, addressing these issues and making our school district, getting back on, or not, not back on a path, but, but making sure that we're, we've got the highest bar for academic standards possible, and that we've got great relationships with the community and great relationships with our teachers. And that I don't care if I get, if anybody recognizes me at all. I don't care.
One of the things I wanted to talk about too, we're kind of just dawned upon me, we touched on with George, not as much as I would like, but are, are you familiar with how the school district is performing? Like from an academic perspective?
Yeah, so the, the, the district is, I think, on the path to recovery from COVID, like a lot of districts. So I think, I think if you were to look at the curves, right, the, the curves were, you know, kind of scores were, were, were kind of flatlined, maybe even slightly kind of trending a little bit down prior to COVID, we kind of cratered during COVID and we're, we're kind of coming back. And so.
Do you know the graduation rate?
Offhand, I don't. Not, I don't have the graduation rate offhand. But, you know, I think one of the things that you can do, one of the benefits of not being in education is that I'm not beholden to any of the current group think.
This is great.
Right? All I, all I care about is asking questions and finding out what works. I'm a data-driven guy, right? So if, if we're going to say, hey, we're going to change this up.
Love that, yeah, that's, that's, that's the whole theme of this.
Yeah, so it's like, if we're going to change things up, like even this K to, K five to K to four model, it's like, if you told me it would cost zero to make this change, my initial position is probably going to be deference to the educational professionals to say, okay, if this is what you think is best. But, but I'm going to do my job and my due diligence. And I want to see where's the, do we have data for other districts?
Yeah, collaboration.
That have done this, that show an improvement in something, right? Like, why are we doing this? And that's, that's going to. Correct. And that, that'll be my approach on everything. If, if somebody brings a curriculum change and says, hey, we want to do this, it's like, okay, well, do we have data on this curriculum versus what we're using now? And why would, why, you know, what's the impetus for making the change? And just make sure that it kind of fits in the big picture of what we're trying to, what we're trying to accomplish.
Right. It sounds like to me, in these positions, you know, we want people who are going to be transparent with us, be common sense above everything. Especially when we're talking about children, children's education, you know, so, and I feel like Paul exemplifies that as well as having financial expertise in, in what he does. And also he's big in his community, so you could touch on that. I know you, you've been involved with your community a lot, like I was reading the file. I know Boys and Girls Club of Allentown.
Yep, I've been on the board there for about 15 years.
Oh, you're on the board, okay.
On the board chair right now.
Wow.
Yeah, so this is actually my second stint as board chair. And again, to give you, you know, here's a little flavor of the kinds of things that, that I've, I've got to, I've had the, the opportunity to, to, to deal with. You know, so this is, I'm now in year two, I guess, heading into year three of this stint. And shortly after I became the, the board chair for the second time, the current, the then-current CEO, who had been there 40 years or so, tells me she's going to retire. So now I have, I get to lead the effort to hire her replacement. So, you know, so now I've gone through the whole process of going through, heading up the search committee, right? Bringing that, you know, doing, doing the full search.
Getting way less.
Hiring a brand new CEO, going through the transition period. And at the same time, her right-hand person who had been with her for 40 years retired a month earlier. So now we've got to, right, now you're talking about, you're building almost a, you know, it's a smaller organization, right? There's, so you're talking about having to build almost a brand.
I saw the good, the good Lord's rule for you is the, is a wedge, man. You come in and write when the time is needed. That's an interesting, unique opportunity too. And my cousin, she works with the Boys and Girl Club, and, and I know that's like pretty hands-on. There's a lot of moving parts to that as well.
It's a lot of moving parts. And again, you're dealing with budget issues, right? We're dealing with, right now, law, loss of federal funding, right? There's been an issue. Well, we're, we're dealing with it. We had, we had federal funding that we, you know, we had grants that were, had been.
Do you mind if we lean into that a little bit? I know it's not necessarily, there's a correlation between what you're doing now, but I think that's, that's the most important thing to me with candidates at any level, is to make sure that you have qualified people. I think people run for so many different reasons. And I think there's a lot of people, which I respect, but locally I notice there's a lot of people that have intentions of doing other things and there's nothing wrong with that, but their eyes are already there, you know?
I think when you actually. If you, if you are voting for people who are politically oriented.
Yeah.
And I don't care which side, but if they're politically oriented, there is a reasonable chance that they're not actually qualified or have the experience to do the job they're running for.
There you go. And that's what I mean.
Perfect.
Yeah, right?
That's, that's exactly. If you're just going to go to Washington and stand in front of a camera and, and, and sort of do the partisan thing.
We want no more Gavin Newsom.
But like, you're at least somewhat qualified to do that.
Yeah, true, okay, fair enough, yeah.
But, you know, if you're, if you've got to now work again in a job where, you know, 99% of what you're doing isn't going to touch any of these big talking points.
Yeah. There's no TV cameras around most of the time.
You know, you're not bringing the, the necessary skills and experience to the table to do the job.
That's why I said, common sense, transparency, which he's all for, his financial expertise, his community, everything he does in the community, big advocate in the community. It's not just that, your board chair, it says, Finance Audit Committee, Chair of the Great Futures Committee, Chair of the Government Mental Relations Committee. I mean, treasure of work.
Yep, a small organ, smaller organization. I mean, we've, we're not, we're not tiny, tiny, but you know, it's, you know, when, when you pitch in, you're sort of, I, I say like the, you know, right now, our, our new CEO, it's like, hey, she invites me to a, she's like, I need you on a committee. It's like, all right, I'm, I'll be on the committee.
I love that. Exemplary in, in regards of like being involved. That's what this is all about for us. We have plethora of the things we talk about, but getting people involved. And I think the, the disconnect a lot of times is people understanding how important these issues are. This has been, throughout the process of us doing this, been an eye-opening experience for, for us as well. I thought the school board had way tinier window, a narrow space of what they actually were responsible for.
And let me ask, and in some ways there is, right? It's, it's sort of a, it's sort of a, a narrow, say, if you were just to put them on a piece of paper, right? It's sort of a narrow level of responsibility, if you will, but it's the big picture stuff.
The financial implications.
Right? Well, it's the financial implications, but it's also setting the, helping to set the, the direction of the organization, helping to build, what kind of culture do we want to build?
Superintendent, that alone.
Right, and, and.
George told us too, the lawyer, that you guys are responsible for a district lawyer. I don't, that, that's a different school district, so I'm not sure.
Correct. So you hire a, the board hires a district solicitor.
Yeah.
And, you know, so depending on, and again.
Which is a cornerstone in the organization as well.
Correct. And so you want to make sure you've got somebody who's, you know, being transparent and telling you the way it is and not, not bringing, you know, any sort of perceptible bias to the table there as well.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. How, how does the district handle disciplinary issues, including bullying, violence?
Yeah, so the, the answer there is it depends on who you talk to, right? So we, we've been fortunate, you know, we've got, like I said, we've got two girls in the district. We have not, like, we personally haven't run into an issue where we've had to deal with sort of a disciplinary issue above and beyond on anything, either our girls directly or indirectly. But, you know, and, and I think a big part of the problem is with our privacy and HIPAA laws, right? Like they don't, you can't say anything.
Yeah.
So, you know, when I was growing up and going through school, like if there was a fight, you knew who was suspended, for how long, right? Now, nobody seems to know anything, because they don't release any information. And because of that, I think, and with, with how, at least there's a perception that the district focuses on optics over substance at times. I think this sort of, I don't want to say over the top, but there's definitely a focus on this hashtag East Penn pride and, you know, this, making the district look good, that there's definitely a perception that the bad stuff gets swept under the rug and is minimized and not dealt with appropriately.
Which is, which I'll say is not, it's probably not a, a, a issue that is unique to them in any regard, but it's good that you're aware of it.
And I'm not even sure that if you were to, I'm not going to put intention on anybody with that, right? So I'm not going to say that that's what they're doing, but that is the clear perception.
Yeah.
By, from a lot of people.
And Amaya's is changing, from, from what I see from outside looking in, when I drive by, I drive up Harrison every day, so I see the kids going to school. And I think that's, it's interesting time of, where it was very homogenous at one time, but I, I feel like there's been a lot of expansion.
Student population is much more diverse than it, than would have been 15 years ago, for sure. And, you know, I think, you know, I've heard from teachers that, you know, elementary school teachers in particular, that they, that there's a lot of behavioral issues. And they, they would, I think if they were sitting here, they're, they're not convinced it's being dealt with the best way. And they don't, they don't feel backed up by their school principals and they don't necessarily feel backed up by the administration in terms of dealing with them.
It's not like that you have the, your ear to the door on those issues, because I mean, I think those are things like.
Because I'm not in the buildings all the time, right? So, you know, and this is one of the reasons why I think I've been able to make some headway with some of our, our teacher population is because I've had an open door. I get a lot of. I've got, I get a lot of emails or texts that will start something like, hey, so-and-so vouched for you. I'd like, I'd appreciate it if you keep this between us. And, you know, usually it's because they're fearful of some kind of retribution. And it's kind of like.
I love that, that you're already like in action though. That doesn't, that's the best part. You're already.
And frankly, that's a role that I would continue to play win or lose.
Yeah.
If I can be helpful in this way, in this area, I'm going to continue to be helpful.
We gotta do the right thing, guys.
And again, it's one of those things, I can't sit here and, and tell you that there's any reason why that, that perception on their part is real. I'm not sure I've ever seen an example of where a teacher's spoken out, there's been some sort of retribution. It's just not how I've seen the district work. But there, there is clearly the, the fear and anxiety around it, to where they don't feel comfortable standing up and saying, hey, this is going on.
Feel for losing their job or being alienated from coworkers or supporters.
Yeah, so I think it's important.
I feel like at the workplace, but it shouldn't be like that.
No, and frankly, I, I won't be able to do my job well.
If you have a concern, should be open door policy, you have a concern, let's voice it, let's come up with a solution, which I think you would obviously do a great job of.
Absolutely.
I think ha- half the battle here is just facilitating things and being transparent about what you're doing, right? Now, I've, I've told, people have asked me, you know, will you promise to do this or promise to do that? And I always say, no, I'm not, I don't, not making promises. Because as sure as I'm sitting here, the first thing I'll have to deal with will be something that has some nuance to it that will.
Where you could pin down on an answer.
And it's like, wow, I pinned myself down on that back there. But the only thing that I, I do promise is, is twofold. One, I'll always have the open door. So if you have something, you can bring it to me. I think I've tried to do my best to demonstrate that over the last three years and I would continue to do that. And then number two is that you'll always know where I stand and why, subject to any legal or ethical issues that would be involved in me not explaining something. But outside of that, you'll, you'll always know where I stand and why on something.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's great.
Here's a, I know, obviously with like the national media and things like that, with safety in schools and particularly, obviously, mashroom and stuff like that. Do you, do, do they have an armed guard at their school?
So I know there's.
Was it resource officer?
There's a resource officer.
Okay.
Which I think is good.
Yeah, and, and I.
And has there ever been any, like incidents, threats, anything like that?
So, I mean, you know, there, there's been the occasional like, hey, they, they found a bullet in somebody's backpack. And so there, now there.
Isolated.
There are now very strict protocols, right? I mean, even for medical issues, they lock the school down. I mean, you know, my daughter texted me the other day and was like, hey, there's a medical lockdown, I'm late for lunch. So if, 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 if they need to have emergency EMS personnel to enter the building. They lock it down so they can get in and out.
I like that.
I think that's good.
Yeah, it's not, it's neither here nor there, but there's various stricts.
Advocate of having a resource officer at every school or a police officer at every school. People tend to argue me about it, I don't know why, but I feel like it, you know, it tends to make schools safer, so I'm glad that they have that there.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they've got one, at least one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I grew up with two. I went to Whitehall.
Yeah, we had, so we started with, when I started at Freedom, we had one.
And we, I think we ended with two. There was, okay, I always thought it was like a new for a.
You know, I, I think, I think it helps with the community, like, police officers were in and out of Whitehall when I went there. Like, they were always there, like the dare stuff, do you know what I'm saying?
I do, yeah.
Yeah, like stuff like that. I feel like it actually helped with the community, helped you like trust.
Ours got, ours got a lot.
Ours got ours got along with everybody.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, to help build like a good, a good, you know, relationship between law enforcement and kids in schools, and I I it it's mind-boggling to me.
He used to come to our games and everything.
Right. It's mind-boggling to me why people like argue about that, like, oh, no, you don't wanna militarize our schools. No, we want safety in schools, and if you look at statistics, obviously, schools with a cop, never, you never see any of these mentions happen. So I feel like it's pretty logical and common sense. Once again, people like to argue about it for some reason, but that's why.
No, I think people.
I feel like it's a big concern. Whenever I ask my wife, just 'cause I asked her, I talked to my wife and I said, you know, I'm interviewing the school board gunner podcast, which I ask him. I swear, every, her, her coworkers, that's like the first thing they ask.
Yeah.
Just because.
Topic of conversation, yeah.
It is. And honestly, there there are some people who are just, they're anti-gun, right? And that's that that is their their moral position, and they don't, they don't want them in their house, they don't want, you know, they they don't want them in their schools. And it's like, that that that's fine, right? But at some point, there's a practical position that needs to be had. And, you you know, to me, yeah, I I don't, I don't disagree. I think if, you know, having a resource officer or two in the building.
I mean, we spend taxpayer money on a lot of ridiculous things.
Yeah.
What what's more important than having safety at your children's school? Just, it's not, it, it's just so common sense to me. I don't know how really anyone could disagree, but like you said, there's people that are just anti-gun. But it's one thing being anti-gun, you don't want a gunner, you don't want a gun in your house, but a police officer.
Listen, I I've I've had that conversation with a handful of people, and I think that it's just like they just, that is a line they draw. And it's just, it is a big, bright line for them.
Yeah, but I I like how you touched on practicality. Paul, before we wrap, is there, I I kind of wanted to go into, I mean, I really originally wanted to ask you your why, but you kind of answered that in the process of your why is because it's necessary, right? And that's what I love. You're on the cusp of a lot of big changes.
You know, I I look at it this way, it's a mission I believe in, it's right here in my backyard, and I think, you know, I've been very intentional over the last probably four or five years about, like, getting out of social media. I'm on it, like, I do the family thing.
Just go for your mental health.
It's good. I don't I don't argue.
I'm gonna cut him off and say, Paul's been coaching me, there's a lot been happening politically, and we talked to Paul, and Paul was the first one to tell me it's time to get off behind you.
It's like, I I stopped.
Pivotal advice.
Literally, the only time.
Paul tells us not to comment.
Yeah, don't don't comment, don't read the comments either.
The, it, yeah, don't read the comments.
Don't read the comments.
You know, it's like, you know, it's like, you gotta kick the news out, kick the corporate news out, get off social media.
And get back to the basics.
Get out with your neighbors. So, you know, we we're living in in a in a time where it's like we are, the forces that wanna divide us are very strong.
Very strong.
And they want us to look at our our neighbors as enemies. And the only way that I know how to to combat that is to focus on my little corner of the world, roll up my sleeves, and get to work with people who think like me, people who don't think like me, and say, listen, it doesn't matter, because we've got one common goal here with this organization, let's work together and make this better.
Right, be a great advocate.
What I like about the school board is that the goal is so consolidated, right? Like, it's something that everybody can agree on.
Correct. And that's the other thing that happens, right? So when you, one of the things over the last three years is I've had these conversations, honestly, the best friendships and relationships I've built are with people that would have disagreed with me.
On other things politically, yeah.
Right? But we've built some really strong bonds because we want the same things. And what's what's really cool is that once you do that, the thing that goes away is doubting the motivation of the other person.
Correct.
Because you then realize that we both want the same thing. We might come at it differently, but you're not a terrible person. I know you and your family, we've spent time together.
Yeah.
All right, we've had lots of conversations, we've 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 gone to dinner, we've we've, you know, had drinks together. And, you know, so I've been very intentional about making sure I do that. I've done it with a couple of the other school board candidates running. I've done it with current school board members. It's like, we might have to work together.
Really, it's the only way.
At the end of the day.
And as we get farther and farther away from that, I think it's really important, I I think it's great that you said that, it's a profound thought at a time when discourse like that is necessary.
Yeah, go ahead.
One one question, how many school board members is there?
So there are nine total, there are four seats open this time.
Okay, and of those nine, 'cause I know you have to do a party affiliation, correct?
You do. Yeah, well, you can cross file, but I mean, everybody is theoretically registered with one of the two parties, because running, running, running in Pennsylvania is in independence very difficult.
You know, running anywhere is independent, difficult, really. But yeah, do you know, um, how many are Democrats, how many are Republicans?
I think if you did it just by party registration, I think it would be six Democrats and three Republicans.
Currently.
Currently.
Currently, okay. Okay.
That's what I was told to.
By by party registration.
Yeah, that's about what I.
How do they normally vote on things? Are they all in unison, or usually it's split by party?
So again, the vast majority of what I'll call kind of the perfunctory stuff, you know, approving conference budgets and personnel issues, they they seem to be pretty unanimous. You know, the budgets, honestly, the budgets have been pretty unanimous over the years. This last time, I think it was eight to one. I think Mr. Falegi was the only one who voted against the the four percent tax increase with the with the most recent budget. We've had a few split votes over the years, but it's been on some of the more things that have garnered some attention.
Yeah.
But otherwise, otherwise, if if I was guessing, like, if you went back through the last five years of all the votes, my guess is ninety percent of them would be unanimous.
Not to put you on the spot, would you have voted for the four percent tax increase? You have to look at everything.
You know, it's.
Who else is implicated with it?
I I think it depends, right? And so, and and 'cause it there, I would have had to have had some questions answered around what the intentions are going forward, is to say, we're doing this four percent, but then we're we're designed to come back down and kind of keep it at a lower level, but we've we've kept it low for the last few years, we need to kind of get it up and then get it back down. Like, I might have been able to get comfortable with that. Knowing that we've got this realignment plan hanging out there, it would have been real hard to vote for a four percent tax increase, followed by knowing what was coming here. Well, and even knowing that the, even if you're not at the max, I mean, you are probably at the two to three percent level, you know, for the next little bit of time, almost no matter what you do.
Squeezes.
We we have, yeah, 'cause we have.
Even not at that at that cap, it's still squeezes, it's a tight squeeze.
And so i- i- if if I felt comfortable that, you know, there were gonna be some adjustments made going forward that would keep the tax increases going forward much more at kind of the one, one and a half percent level, then maybe I could get behind it, but that probably wouldn't have been the case.
Yeah, I I will say, it does make me feel better, and we want you to get rest, but it it makes me feel better with somebody who says that they would lose a little sleepover thinking about it and kind of working through it rather than just slapping.
I would have lost a lot of sleep.
Yeah, yeah, which which I, that's 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 the vibe that I got from it. So that 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 makes me feel good, you know?
Is there anything that we didn't touch on that you want to say? Is there anything in particular that we didn't touch on that you want to say?
No, I I think the only thing that I wanna say is that with these local elections, it is really, really important to make sure that you get to know the individual candidates.
Correct.
I don't care what party they're with. There are gonna be candidates on both sides in local elections that are qualified for the positions, and there are likely gonna be candidates on both sides in a lot of these local elections that aren't qualified for the position. And, you know, if if you are not comfortable with kind of the current environment and atmosphere, then I would say make sure that you're you're electing qualified, common sense people that aren't oriented towards the national stuff.
Yeah.
And and especially for these local offices, right?
And that's my biggest concern. I mean, we we obviously are a more conservative platform, but I love that your approach, really, we talked very little about, if not at all, about any sort of political stuff.
Because honestly, they don't matter.
You shouldn't politicize children's education.
No, not at all.
It should be from a practical approach.
I don't even think it should be, like, I don't think you should do like party affiliation with school board.
Uh, it is, it is the unfortunate byproduct of this entire thing, which is why, in theory, you you cross file.
I think you should.
But what happens is, I I did, but what happens is both political parties get involved and let their base voters in a primary know which ones got are registered with whom.
Yeah.
And so, and of course, the primaries are basically just.
Then it still funnels.
Turnout.
Funnels down into the little buckets.
I I I as like a logical thing, I just think it shouldn't be, like, I don't think you should have to state what party you're affiliated with, or what you, 'cause it really has nothing to do with national.
Yeah.
It doesn't. And and like I said, if you if you end up voting for people who are oriented towards those national issues.
Yeah.
Chances are, A, they're gonna come up.
Yeah.
Because they're they're oriented that way.
Right.
Right? And B, uh, they're they're probably not gonna have the skill set and the experience you want.
So like, for like funding, honestly, in my opinion, like, why, what do they make you do? It doesn't really make sense to me.
Because it, because it runs through the electoral system.
Because that that's why, yeah.
Because it runs through the electoral system.
Yeah.
And both parties sort of have that monopoly in Pennsylvania on, it's a closed primary system, and that works to their benefit. And so, you know, they they use it to their advantage to try to gain seats and raise money.
Yeah, well, I just like that the Republican approach is more from a fiscal where sometimes with the Democratic stuff, it does concern me to have a bunch of very progressive people on a school board.
Right.
When it comes to these sort of decisions.
Well, we're open to talking to any Democrats that wanna come on and talk.
Absolutely.
You know, we're we're open to talking to any candidates that are running, uh, as a Democrat as well. I mean, we, you know, we're not beholden to the Republican Party or anything like that, but we.
We're beholden to common sense and practicality.
If you focus on, if if you're, i- if independence and critical thought are important to to you, you shouldn't be beholden to any party.
Yeah, I agree.
And that's one thing that I I, you know, I've said, and I've done, actually, during the realignment plan, one of the current board members got pretty vocal about some of his concerns as it related to the realignment plan. He's a registered Democrat. And I su- I supported what he was saying and doing publicly and privately.
We need more of that.
And and I told him that, I said, listen, if if you can, you know, if you say something I I agree with, I will say it. And if you, if I disagree, I'll say that too.
Right.
And I would do it for, you know, Republicans.
Common sense, logical thinking.
Because at the end of the day, that job, the D and the R, doesn't matter. What matters is we're, you know, the ideas being talked about and what we're trying to get done right then, right there.
Yeah, and also long-term goals.
And long-term goals.
It's a big part of it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, Paul, Paul, we appreciate you having us on. You, I wanted to let you finish with letting our viewers know where they can support you.
Sure.